Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is 7:30 PM on September 27th, 2023. Time for our second regular meeting of the month. At this time, Mr. Schultz, we're all for an invocation, and I will lead us in the pledge. If you're able, would you please stand? Bow your heads. Lord, thank you for letting us gather here tonight. Give us the strength, the stability, the persistence, the ability to make the right decisions for the citizens of Washington Courthouse and the city of Washington Courthouse. Keep us all in good, safe, and in good health. And thank you for being there, and thank you for listening to us, and thank you for everything. And in your name, amen. Join me for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Roll call, Kelly.
Schultz.
Here.
Blair. Christman.
Here.
Hawke.
Here.
Hernandez. Johnson.
Here.
Lynch.
I'm here.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Blair.
Okay, roll call.
Schultz.
Here. Yes, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's all right.
It's yes this time.
Christman.
What?
Oh, I did.
Yes.
Hawke.
Hawke.
Yes.
Yes. Johnson.
Yes.
And Lynch.
I'll make a motion to excuse Ms. Hernandez.
Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Mr. Blair's on vacation, and Ms. Hernandez is watching her son play football in Jackson, Ohio. Okay, I've got, I am pleased that I have two students here from my government class. One of them earning points, the other one not because he's already been here, but he's interested in city government. Will you two stand up and tell them who you are?
Casey Hawke, I take Dale Lynch as a government class, so pleased to be here.
I'm Maggie Wall, and I'm in the same class, ready to learn how government works in the city.
There you go. Thank you, guys and gals. Maggie just got her 1,000th dig in volleyball last night, and she's only a junior, so she is a very good athlete. And I was kidding her today. I said, "You got 1 million digs," but it was only 1,000. We have the minutes from September 13th, 2023. Anybody see any changes?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as printed here.
Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Any communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
We have Service Safety and Recreation Committee that Mr. Hawke chairs, so he's going to read the minutes from that meeting.
The Service Safety and Recreation Committee met in the council chambers located at 105 North Main Street on Wednesday, September 13th, 2023, at 6:00 PM. Ted Hawke presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Blair, council member; Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member; Mr. Jim Christman, council member; Ms. Kendra Hernandez, council member; Mr. Steve Schultz, council member; Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson; Mr. Ron Sockman, service director; Mr. Tim Downing, fire chief; Mr. Jody Langley, assistant fire chief; Mr. Casey Foil, fire captain; Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney; Mr. Joe Denon, city manager; Mrs. Christina Collins, finance director; Mr. Sean Remington; and Mrs. Sylvia Call, citizens. The administration recommended proceeding with the recycling survey that was presented at an earlier date. Number two, Mrs. Sylvia Call addressed the committee regarding playground equipment located at Iman Park. Mrs. Call continued and presented a handout of a proposed inclusive playground area. The committee recommended that discussions continue regarding additional playground equipment. Number three, the committee benefited from a general report by the Washington Police Department given by Mr. Denon. Mr. Denon advised that the police department was prepared for the scarecrow festival. Number four, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Fire Department. Chief Downing noted that a Spartan truck had been selected. The committee noted that it is the best option for the department and the community. Number five, the administration noted that all newly hired fire department personnel had been assigned to a shift. Number six, the administration reviewed the fire run analysis report presented by Chief Downing. Chief Downing noted the success of the sound-off program. Chief Downing noted that Washington Courthouse Fire Department was awarded as one of the top regional fire departments on education programs for fire prevention in schools. Number eight, the administration noted that a recent storm had caused significant issues within the wastewater treatment plant that had consumed a great deal of city personnel, time, and resources. Number nine, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Service Department. The administration noted that paving had been completed on Court Street. Number 10, the administration noted the need to replace one of the two carbon feeders at the water plant. The committee noted the need to proceed. Number 11, the committee benefited from an update regarding the bike trail. The administration noted trail construction on the Patterson property. Number 12, the administration advised the committee of a vehicle accident that had damaged a hydrant, causing a ripple effect of issues in major main breaks. The committee noted that water and service personnel had worked diligently to resolve the issues. Number 13, the committee noted the road closure schedule for the upcoming scarecrow festival. The administration advised that the homecoming parade scheduled for the same time would not be effective. Number 14, the administration noted the need to extend the sewer toward the Duffy Drive area. The committee noted that the cost would be approximately $80,000. Number 15, the administration noted the upcoming Market Street project that will begin in 2024, 2025 year. The committee noted that this would be a cooperative grant project with the Ohio Department of Transportation. The administration advised the committee of the need to divide the funding over a two-year period and noted that the city portion may be largely an OPWC project. Number 16, the administration advised the committee that Court Street Railroad project would begin from September 21st through September 26th, and that Court Street would be closed at the rail crossing during these dates. Respectfully submitted, Ted Hawke, Chairperson, Service Safety and Recreation Committee, and Mrs. Kelly Ford, Recording Secretary.
Wow, thanks, Ted.
I was going to say, I was going to read.
Anyway, is there any questions or comments about that report? Someone want to make a motion to accept that?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Mr. Denon, your report, please.
Thank you. Recently, we had a regional development meeting. Mr. Schultz proudly represented the city of Washington Courthouse and did an excellent job, but would really like to especially thank Bayutech. They're the folks out in the industrial park. They weave fiberglass, and we talked a little bit earlier about, in the year, about their expansion also into that plastic corrugated product, which largely is an alternative to the traditional, some people call Coretech Board, that's no word for it, where you have the sandwich of fiberglass, resin, and plywood. The advantages of the corrugated material is that it is rot resistant. It's much lighter than the traditional plywood material. And their expansion also displaces importing that particular product from China, which is very nice, that you'll switch to domestic production. Plastalene, which is the food packaging, new food packaging operation out in the industrial park, and Honda LG all participated in a little panel discussion about business expansion in the Fayette County area. And they did a very nice job, and again, would like to thank Mr. Schultz. I'm sure that, well, this is not the most pleasant thing. Where's our treatment plan? You know, we had that lightning strike, which resulted in loss of main power and also did not allow generator power to be switched over. The cleanup from that continues. We continue to talk with the insurance company, and hopefully, we will come to a satisfactory resolution there. But that is something that we continue to still pump down and work on, and it is consuming a considerable amount of time and attention. But that is something that we have to move along with. Rail crossing at Court Street. We are as pleased as punch how that came out. And that ought to be something that is very durable in the long term, the way that that was done. But we are exceptionally pleased with that. Would like to compliment the railroad for their work and the speed at which we were able to do it. And in particular, would like to thank the street department for their efforts with that. That is something that we are just as happy as we can possibly be. Want to talk a little bit tonight, too, about, I brought it up in committee, aggregation rates for electric and gas. Just a reminder, Energy Harbor is the electric supplier, and the rate through May of '24 is .0458 a kilowatt hour, okay? If you have questions about the aggregation program, you can contact us up there. I will take care of you. You can call Energy Harbor or Buckeye Energy Broker, and we have all those numbers available, and we will put together a little one-page flyer to put what people's utility bill. Natural gas aggregation, the supplier is IGS, and that price is fixed at .6169 cubic foot through September of 2024. This time of year, you begin to get natural gas questions, so we will try to put together a little reminder there. Market Street. We've talked with ODOT quite a bit, and what we'll want to do there is slightly different than the committee report, assuming there's no objections. The estimated cost of that project continued to climb rightly. So what we would propose doing is spreading out full-depth repair in '24 and '25, and things like the handicap crosswalks to make that a little bit easier to deal with. Now, by full-depth repair, that would be exactly like what you saw on Court Street, where there's sections of the road that we identify that need additional attention. So you cut those out, you excavate those much deeper than you normally would with simply resurfacing, and then we fill that back up with asphalt that provides you a smooth surface to drive on, but it's not finish asphalt. If you look at it, it's a little bit coarse. So then, in '26, we would overlay that with finish asphalt, which increases the life of the roadway, but a lot of it is cosmetic to an extent. So that is how we would like to tackle that, and we'll continue to have a little bit further discussion with ODOT. And unless there's some major concern or issue, that is probably how we make that work.
Any questions for Mr. Denon? Okay, thank you. Next is our Finance Director, Mrs. Collins. You're up for your report.
All right. Well, I have good news. Most months, good. So I am happy to report that our investments for the month of August showed an increase. They've been doing pretty well. So our Fifth Third Securities and US Bank Securities had an increase of about $12,600 between July and August. And our Star Ohio investments continued to perform well. They had a gain of about $17,000 between July and August. We're maintaining about a $1.6 million balance, cash balance in our Denon fund, which is good, and we stay between that, about 1.8, 1.9 each month. There's no significant increases or decreases, which is good. And I think that's all I have to report tonight.
So you want to have any questions for Mrs. Collins?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pitstick, our city attorney, do you have a report?
I don't have a report, Mr. General Counsel.
Okay. We are ready for local residents and taxpayers. I see we have three people signed up. The way we do this is, if you haven't done it before, is you'll come up to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and then you can speak to us. Thing I always ask is that you stay to the point and keep it as brief as possible, and obviously, as civil as possible, whatever you're talking about. But I believe that Ms. Cloud is first signed up, so if you would come forward, tell us your name and address.
Thank you so much for this opportunity this evening to speak with the city council. My name is Sylvia Cloud. I live at 9739 West Lancaster Road, Jeffersonville. I lived there for 15 years. My husband and I have a farm there, and we sit and watch the Honda plant growing across the highway from us, which is an indication of great changes, positive changes coming to Fayette County, which to us was very much like where we came from. I came from Pike County. My husband from rural East Tennessee. So Fayette County fit us very well. And even though we don't live here within the city, I work in the city. I worship in the city, and I shop here in the city. This is an important place to us in our daily lives. What we want to express in this case is some concerns about the direction, some negative changes seem to be happening with the event of the October 13th witches' party, I'll call it. As they call it in Columbus, this would be considered a witches' ball. And it concerns me because if we're bending into this kind of event allowance, we need to consider some of the facts about the groups that are holding this. One of the first things I did as a journalist, as well as a person who lives here, is I was looking for facts. Let me know what's going on, who these people are. If you are aware, I'm not sure, but how many of you are aware that witches are not necessarily Wiccan? Wiccan is not always witches. Wiccan is a religion. Witches are not. They're practitioners. And some of the things that they practice could, in some cases, be considered illegal. But they have become constitutionally approved, and they can practice as religion. I kind of question that because witches are not a religion. I'm not here to quote scripture because we know what it says about witchcraft. I'm not here to prove my religious views, although they shape my opinions and my views. I'm here to ask some questions, rhetorical perhaps, from you as the authorities and overseers of the city, and would like to just try to get a feel for where we may be going with future Main Street Fayette events. Because I'm not fully aware of how that committee came together and how I see they have an election coming up and how that will change. But I think it's important for us as people who live here to have a concern about things that will affect our citizens. And as a Christian, I feel that this is an effect on the souls of the city. Now, I recognize the US constitutional rights and the freedom of liberty, the right to assemble peacefully without violence, and I surely hope that this event will have that stability and that there'll be no issues with this. But considering methodology, we just need to understand and hopefully see who's overseeing this, who has oversight over approving such events, and if they have to propose what they plan to do, because we don't want any surprises. We don't want any surprise when they're dancing with their witches' dance that they become naked. It's not an uncommon thing for witches. But we need to make sure of what their plans are and as a means of protecting our citizens and our children. Questions, I'd like you to consider in light of uncertainty of this, of the oversight, who's allowing them to do what they do, what they don't do, are this. Was it ever considered when they were given the reins of this committee, the Main Street Fayette, about what other types of formerly illegal actions they might introduce under the guise of event operations and entertainment or freedom of religion? I'm curious how the committee members were initially chosen, and like I said, I see an election is forthcoming, so apparently, it's open to the public, I would presume within the city, which excludes me, and that's fine. I'm not here for that. What restrictions in oversight do you have on this committee? I'm a little unaware if it's city council or if it's county commission who developed this and where they're going with it. Do the downtown businesses get to vote on what kind of events are happening here? I do know of at least two who are not planning to open during this because it's opposed to their beliefs. So I caution that the mainstream event organizers don't hold downtown businesses hostage with this when they find it offensive for their own businesses. Therefore, they close. They lose out on business, too. So I speak for the sake of those businesses who don't want to be involved. As to this event, what surprises can we anticipate? I did mention that. Will someone inadvertently do something that will shock the public? We want to make sure what their plans are. How far do they plan to carry on their practices within this non-religion? And can we construe this to be a means of indoctrination and acceptable growth of their recruitment for their activities? It's of concern to me. It's a Christian. It's of concern to me as a mother. I just want to know for sure that our children are not exposed to things that are of a negative aspect. Because we all know that with the tenants and the goals of Christian groups that love, joy, peace, gentleness, kindness, truth, faith, knowledge, light, life, forgiveness, all of these things are part of being a Christian, and there's no law against these. With the witchcraft tenants, they deal with death, fear, manipulation, selfish desires, sexual perversity, magic, and demonic assistance. And they prefer to do their deeds under the cover of darkness so that their fires will light their way. As for the terms of good witches, that's an oxymoron. So these are the problematic issues I have with this event that's downtown. And so to close, my key question to you is not, if it's not of your jurisdiction, who is overseeing this and making sure that it stays stable, that it stays proper, that it can be a fun event, but not one that's going to cause a great uproar among the Christian community who is a big part of your city? And I get that because we prayed this evening. And I think that's important because Almighty God is the one who's watching, and He is the one who we'll all be subject to when it comes to what happens here. We learned many practical, civil, and moral lessons from the Bible. Esther, for instance, when she went to the king and let him know that her people were going to be killed, he had already established an unchangeable verdict, an unchangeable king's law that they were to be killed. What happened? Because she pleased him, because she did it the proper way, she brought about a different law that sided up against him and helped balance the table between the evil that wanted to kill the Jews and the Jews who were hopelessly, without hope, with this law that they couldn't change. Consider what we can do to balance the stability of what's happening within your city to keep it level, to keep it secure, to keep it upright, and protect the city so that it can grow. It's good to see growth. It's good to see positive change, like the Honda paint plant and all that's going to happen out there. That's going to be a major, major improvement for the county, even though, for my farm, I kind of hate seeing the structure. But it's okay, because I know there's good that will come of it. Let's make sure that we keep our morals, our civics, and our duty to God just as improved. I appreciate your time, and I thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before anybody comments about that, Ms. Osterly?
Yes, I'm right here.
Are you going to speak on the same?
Yes.
Okay, would you go ahead again? Your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Kim Osterly, and we live at 220 Emerald Lane here in town. We're also concerned about this event happening on the 13th. Dan and I grew up in Fayette County, and we raised our three boys here. So we think it's a very family-friendly place. You know, we know it has its problems, things that need to be addressed, but overall, it's a good place to raise children. And we find it very troubling that the city will be holding essentially what is a celebration of the occult. Spiritual readings and witches' dances were what were on this online flyer that I read. Now, that goes beyond just trick-or-treat for kids and costume parties for adults. That goes into the occult. And that's alarming and actually frightening. And we don't believe that that is consistent with the image we want to present to the large number of families that are becoming in, that are becoming in, like the Honda plan as Sylvia mentioned. We want them to think and to realize that this is a good place to raise families, okay? And I understand the Dora was put into place to increase the economic opportunity, the economic status of the downtown. I don't know that it's doing that, but I do know that an event such as this, such as this is not going to help what we wanna do downtown. It's not going to help the image and the economic status of it. We want our downtown to thrive, Dan and I both do. I served on the board of the Fayette County Chamber of Commerce for seven years. And Dan and I operated a small business here in town until we retired in January. We want our town and our county to prosper. There's a great amount of potential here. And I'm sure you all agree or you wouldn't be doing what you're doing. We can make this happen. But having a community event such as this, it divides the community, it divides the county rather than uniting it. I think there are much better ways to, to highlight our, our attributes, our positives than, than something such as this. Now I understand that city council did not initiate this, did not approve it, um, and probably can't do anything to change it. Uh, and maybe you personally think it wasn't a, a very good idea to start with, or maybe you did. But we wanted to make our concerns public and this seemed to be the best form in which to do that. To, to bring it out that, hey, we have a problem with this. You know, silence is either accept, acceptance or, or agreement. And so we can't be silent. We're not going to go protesting or doing mean things and, and hating people or anything crazy, witch burnings or anything like that. But, but we want you to know that, that this is a concern, this is a concern. Uh, I thank you for listening and, and we all, we want future downtown events to be positive, to be uplifting, to showcase what we have, not something dark and, and fearful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Remington, I'm guess, are you talking about the same topic?
Right trail.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure. Uh, now, since there were a lot of questions brought up, I was waiting till you both spoke to kind of answer some of those. Mr. Denon, do you wanna start off, cause you can talk a little bit about Main Street?
Main Street is a nonprofit corporation. Uh, his membership is largely composed of folks with some sort of connection to the downtown. Uh, the purpose is the promotion of downtown. Uh, a Main Street committee can be involved in a number of different things. Uh, the membership of the committee, uh, they're the folks that do the program at Christmas that you might be familiar with. And I can tell you without a shadow of a doubt that they never had an intention to do anything that was not positive or uplifting. Uh, the shop hops, the Main Street folks, they agree on a calendar. Uh, and, uh, they have in the past couple of years tried to provide different themes for their, those shop hops. So they thought about, uh, any number of those. Now quite honestly, the, the theming of the shop hops, we've never been involved with because it's not, it's not a city thing. Uh, and quite honestly, in the past, it has never caused, uh, concern. You know, if you have one in, in the, the, the spring, uh, and you call it the, the tulip shop hop versus the daisy shut, you know, we're not gonna quite honestly have a whole lot of an opinion about that. Now what we will help to facilitate different activities of Main Street. Uh, in this case, they tried to do, uh, a fall Halloween themed one. And I can tell you with one hundred and ten percent confidence. They aim for, the best way I could describe it would be, anybody remember The Addams Family's be on television? You know, that kinda level of spooky, which isn't particularly spooky. Uh, as opposed to an occult celebration with nude witches dancing, that was not. They had no intention, never did. Uh, they're all very nice people and that was never their intention. Now some of the marketing material, like the flyer they put out, got interpreted in a radically different way. And I'm sure several people, uh, probably thinking if we would have labeled it the Monster Mash Dance, uh, we would have avoided a great deal of consternation and aggravation. Uh, but the dance part, you know, I believe that they've, uh, they made arrangements with like a DJ. So you might have a little bit of, oh, Halloween themed music like that, that old Monster Mash song. I can't think and, you know, how many of those that there are. Uh, but that was their intention, it was never any type of occult celebration. Uh, and they're very nice Christian people. I mean, that's nothing, I, I don't have that particular fear. But it has caused a great deal of concern and consternation.
Does anybody on council want to comment?
You know, I got a question, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Um, Casey and Maggie, are either of you brave enough to, I guess, comment? Or even just summarize what, uh, Ms. Cloud or Ms. Osterly came up and spoke to us about? I'm just wondering, because it's like, it's very interesting. They both spoke very eloquently tonight. And this happens, you get people who are very passionate about something. And I end up not always agreeing with everything that comes in. Sometimes I agree, um, however, and, and support the things that come in front of us. And so I guess that's why I'm asking you two back there, because you're in the government class and you're wanting to learn how government works. So hearing some of the things that they said, what are some thoughts that you guys have about this event in our community?
I can't get them to discuss in class.
This will be interesting. You're trying to pull it out of me.
I am. Yeah, there we go.
If I may.
Um, so I guess I can talk about how I interpreted the online ad that they've mentioned. So when I looked at it, so obviously I'm on Facebook as a young teen, so. I saw the ad and thought nothing wrong with it. I, uh, thought it would be a good thing for local business as people come in, they come downtown. They're gonna have a good night, uh, maybe little dancing, maybe getting some drinks through the Dora. If you're old enough, of course, not not. So, uh, I interpreted it fine, I didn't see anything wrong with it. But as I was reading comments, I guess, it kinda changed my mind a little bit. But overall, I think, uh, it would be good for local business, saw nothing wrong with it.
That's very insightful. Mr. Lynch should give you some extra points.
Thank you.
Even though, even though you're not seeking them, you did want.
Uh, I just wanna mention that it did come up in class, Mr. Johnson, because the kids do see those things in social media, imagine that. And, um, the discussion was mostly like Mr. Hawk just said, that they thought it was a Halloween thing. It wasn't anything serious. Um, that was what, the most of the discussion. I'm trying to save Maggie from having to get up and, well then Maggie, you're welcome to, if you wanna say something.
I'm ready.
But yeah, uh, marketing is marketing. And I think they wanted, the reason they marketed the way they did was get people's attention. And you know what? It did. It got everybody's attention. So therefore now more people are aware of what's going to go on Friday, the thirteenth downtown than before because we had a discussion about it. And so that means more people, or look, marketing is a very powerful thing. You can change people's minds by marketing back and forth. You can change products. You can take an old product, put a new label on it and it sells like crazy. Well, before, nobody would touch it. So, oh, Emma, you got a, you got a question?
Can I come up and say something?
Well, let me, before you do. Mr. Hawk, do you wanna make any comments?
Well, to, to me, it's a black and white issue. I mean, you can't play with fire like that. And, um, I, I think that's what we're doing here if we allow this. And actually, I didn't hear about this till my wife saw it on Facebook, I'm not on Facebook. And the rest of you know that I always vote against Halloween too, so.
He does.
But I just think it's a dangerous thing. And, uh, it's by no means something that we've discussed on council as a group. Uh, so it, it was a complete surprise to me. Um, I, and the question was, you know, who, who do you go to for answers as to who, uh, allowed this? I assume it would be the commissioners, cause it's on the courthouse lawn, I don't know.
Hmm, no. Uh, I mean, Main Street themes those events, some of them do not require any assistance at all from us. In fact, the majority of those shop hops don't. Uh, occasionally, we might put out some cones on a couple of parking spaces, like if they were going to have a, um, like a food truck vendor, uh, you know, things of that nature. Um, I mean, you know, before, how they, they themed the events has not been anything that's required. You know, quite honestly, any input from us to have.
Well, I would just hope that we don't require any of the city workers to, um, set barricades or cones and so on. That if, if they would not feel comfortable with this, I would hope that we wouldn't require them to participate in setting this up. Actually, one of our council members is the head of Main Street Fayette, right?
That would be correct.
And she's not here tonight. So I was going to formally ask her to eliminate this from the program on October thirteenth. Because I, I think it's more than just a fun thing, uh, to me. It, it's, like I said, it's, it's just playing with fire with it. I don't think it's a good idea and I would, if Kendra was here, I would request that she, uh, leave that off of the program for that evening. I, I agree with the shop hop and, uh, other than the Dora thing, I, it's been a pretty good thing in the past. Because it promotes local businesses and so on. But I just don't think it's a good idea and I'm opposed to it as, as a council member. Uh, even though it isn't our, necessarily our bailiwick, but, uh, I just wanna go on record that I'm, I'm opposed to it. And I, I probably better quit while I'm ahead, I think.
Mr. Chrisman, do you have any opinion?
Not a whole lot, I didn't hear anything about it till this afternoon. And quite frankly, I appreciate the ladies, Ms. Osterly, Ms. Cloud and the young man did a good job. He should give you that point. My thinking on it, and I'm really old. But when I went to school in Bloomingburg, they had like a Halloween carnival or something. It was fun, they, uh, that's what I took this to be, something along that line, not a, somebody mentioned witch burning and all that stuff. I mean, uh, and I'm not saying that you guys look out of proportion, cause I see your point. But in my way of thinking, I'm still thinking, gee, I remember going to Bloomingburg, Halloween carnivals. To me, that's sort of what this is. Now, I probably won't be to it. I got a bad back and two bad knees, I don't walk very far, very long. But anyway, thanks for coming and I appreciate your comments. And as my understanding, I think Joe might have said that, that we don't really control Main Street to a point, so.
And Mr. Lynch, could I just reinforce one point? With a hundred and ninety-nine point nine percent certainty in my mind, the Main Street folks endeavor to do what they usually do of providing a nice event for the community. And at no time whatsoever was there any desire to promote or host anything like an occult event. Now, you know, I've heard a lot about it too, and I understand everybody's concerns. It's an emotional issue for a lot of people and it's an emotional issue for a lot of folks that tried to do something that they viewed as positive and now they've, and some folks have talked about them like, you know, that they're, they're Satanists and stuff like that, and that isn't the case at all. And if everybody thinks about it in a clear mind, very rarely do I make a religious comment, if everybody remembers that we're all made in God's image. I think that, you know, you'll look at each other in a kind way. Now that the ladies tonight and the young gentlemen, lovely people, lovely people. But sometimes when we get on Facebook and it's just a keyboard, you know, we can get a bit wound up and things get taken a bit differently. But there was never, I, that I could detect any zero, less than zero desire to promote anything that was of a witchcraft type nature.
I would just comment last year that, um, uh, Ms. Hernandez, who is president of the Main Street, uh, put a thing to have put in the paper, it hasn't been put in yet, with some comments that I think might help the situation. She is a very active and leader in her church. She has talked to her pastor about it. Needless to say, it has upset her immensely that people think she's some sort of occult Satanist witch supporter. Um, she is not. She wanted this to be a Halloween thing. Where some of the things that were put out, did people take them wrong, sure did. And maybe they shouldn't have said what they, the way they put it out. But whatever they were doing, palm reading or whatever, they said, it, it was a silly thing. It's nobody who is a real, what would you call that? Somebody that reads crystal ball or. Yeah, there's no real fortune tellers, it was just going to be a joke. Um, you know, somebody sitting in front of a crystal ball and saying silly things. So I think the way that it got put out caused a lot of people to be, to think it was going to be some thing that it was never intended to be. I will say one thing. If it was something that city council thought was inappropriate, yeah, we could stop it. They're doing it in the city, we could stop it. Uh, I don't care whether they're under our control or not, if they're gonna do it in the city, we could stop it. But I'm like Jim or whoever said, I thought from the beginning, forever and ever, when you talk about Halloween, you talk about black cats, ghosts, witches, I mean, that's Halloween. And so I thought it was just something that was a Halloween celebration. Now maybe the way they worded things caused people to get upset about that. And Mr. Hawk is right, he's always voted against, uh, trick or treat night. Personally, I think that's a fun night for kids and I, I don't, I've spent my life working with kids. And so I don't think that's a bad thing. I understand where he's coming from, if it becomes a bad thing, then yeah, we could stop it. But I feel bad, I really do for Ms. Hernandez. She's come under attack and there was never any intention of this being something occult or witchcraft or naked witches dancing around, I mean, come on. There is no way that was ever intended. So I am personally sorry that it got put out there and people have come under attack for something that was never intended to be anything like that and we wouldn't put up with anything like that. So, um, anyway, I appreciate the ladies coming in, expressing your opinion. If I thought it was something like that, I'd be expressing the same opinion, I really would. I don't want that. Um, okay, Mr. Remington, you wanna talk about trails?
Sean Remington, three fifty-seven US Route sixty-two.
Sean Remington, three fifty-seven US Route sixty-two. My comment is less philosophical and more clerical for accounting. So gave a presentation last council meeting and, uh, just follow-up questions on the accounting and the timeline of that project. How much money has been spent to date on the trail at the Patterson property? How much money has been spent at the paving at the sewer plant? And, uh, I'll keep it brief. I'll, I'll leave it at that.
I, I do think, I'm kind of glad you brought that up because that was a paid for by some grant. We had to have it done by a certain time.
Not at the wastewater treatment plant, no.
But what was the thing with community action that?
That was a CBDG project.
Wasn't that part of the trail?
No, trail was that, um. I'll have to, the part at the sewer plant, Sean, it might take me a little bit because I gotta tease it out of the larger project. Can you give us like two weeks and Christina will go through it and come up with a number for you?
Okay, yeah.
How much farther are we going to go on the Patterson property this year?
Well, uh, like to get all the way over to Lakeview and then, uh, you could start, basically replicating what you did on Lakeview on the other side of the road there. And then, uh, there might be a little bit of grant opportunity where I can move some of the paving costs to a grant and continue to march along.
Would, would that be something that you'd be interested in, Sean?
Yes, um, any of that you think time-wise that this year?
Eh, if I try to do the grant, you're not going to pave this year.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Do you, are you putting drainage in at that corner?
You don't have to, yeah. Well, you don't have to, but it makes sense to do that there.
Yeah, before putting a pipe in there to the creek before the path goes down. Okay.
Are you, are you thinking the Patterson property is going to flood or?
No, the road Oakview floods real bad.
Where it always floods.
And it was.
Okay, you're right. It does get pretty.
Describe to me the reason it stops, where it's stopping, not continuing in Lakeview is because, um, the little bit ditch had to be put in.
We're going to do a little bit of drainage work and then, to make the, a long-term safe connection, what I'd actually like to do, you need to move two utility poles, and this sounds expensive, but it's not. Uh, because it's not that far. If we realign the road a little bit and no more of a section of road that you'd realign, we can do that ourselves. And then we put it on next year's paving program.
When we come around that Patterson property over to Lakeview, there's still no way, people still have to walk from one trail, cross railroad tracks over to the other trail, or at least cross Lakeview Avenue over to the other trail. Okay. Because there's really, that's, no, nothing we can really do with that because the railroad.
Well, you're not going to go over it or you're not going to let it.
You can't go on, you can't go under, you can't go over, so they're going to handle.
I think they're ready to, you could.
I think that's where you came in. You were talking about putting some design in the street on the road to show that there is a crossway right there.
Yeah, that's the map we presented it a year ago.
Yes.
We, we were talking, looking at budgets and stuff with paintage and barriers, um, signage, that probably could have been done for under a hundred thousand. I think the budget was allocated for the bike trail was two forty. And so I was saying, the, the priority needed to be from Kroger's out because it, to me, it's, I like trails, but to me, it was really a public safety issue. I mean, there's a lot of, I watch several people on motorized wheelchairs go by every day. I watch people, um, that don't own cars bring their groceries and wagons. I watch a lot of kids riding their bikes across there. There's very heavy bike trails right there, so. So there's, that still could be the path because the path that, the plans, the second drawing that was, um, brought back to us, we would be coming through the Patterson property, through the old Putt Putt in front of Cherry Hill School, and I guess coming through Old West Market.
Yeah, that one, West Market.
And then, but, um, more, um, what we laid out in the presentation is that, um, that's a nice path, but it caused several easements to be bought and a lot more pavement where the path that we presented could have been done with very little paving and more signage, and it could have been completed this year. So, um, but, you know, so that, that's really, I just want to, I mean, everyone is used to the same questions from me, so that's kind of being brief. I don't want to grind it in, but, okay.
We'll try to push forward and get, get a little bit more done on the Patterson property and maybe we can look into crossing that street, crossing Lakeview one way or the other, putting some painting in there or something.
Well, yeah, you're going to need a crosswalk there and then ideally, we've talked with the railroad about even some pedestrian crossing arms to make that even a little bit more safer.
I mean, all those things take time unfortunately, but I realize, you know.
The railroad part of it's a little bit of a, a little bit harder because their Roadmaster changed there. And it's much easier to work that type of issue out with the Roadmaster than if I do it the way you're supposed to do it because that'll drag on until the end of time like that. Change that we made, this is weird. Uh, the one way there at the intersection, Dayton Avenue, I can't remember if we call it Water Street now or Veteran, we call it Veterans Way.
Veterans Way now, yes.
To accommodate them putting in a second set of, uh, crossing guards for the street. Because Rail Development Commission had a concern about the safety of that rail intersection and another set of crossing arms would make that indeed safer. Part of that, uh, unfortunately, uh, the railroad told the rail commission that they want to move, they call them bungalows. Those little metal sheds that contain some sort of mysterious railroad stuff. Uh, but they want to move that about a hundred yards from where it is when they put their crossing arms in and that sent the rail people into a little tizzy. So they are trying to work out where they put that bungalow and then they'll put the rail crossing arms in and they'll be done there.
They've been talking about that rail crossing for two years now.
My observation about the placement of the bungalow is that it is irrelevant to the safety issue and if they want to move their bungalow a hundred yards down the tracks, then let them go do that. Because we don't care where you put it. I mean, as long as you don't put it in Court Street, it's relevant to us.
Not that around, that's actually, um, right there at my shop.
Right across the street from you.
And I just showed up today and there was many semis in our lot and I was like, oh, I guess they're using us as a staging art.
They were working on the track right there.
Yeah, I think now that they finished the main drag, they're moving down to that.
Every time they work on, they have a derailment.
So, so, yeah, that's, and they, they are putting a second arm and, and that needs to be done and so. But, you know, like we allocate the railroad, for anyone that doesn't know, the trail has not been able to follow the creek because the railroad says you can't go in our trestle. Even though they don't own waterways, you can float a canoe down it, but they won't allow the city to go in there. And, um, but, you know, we said you can't go through them, go around them. And so by crossing the railroad at the roads is the way to handle that, so. The distance from the map we laid out was about a, a half a mile, um, up to the corner of the Patterson property. Um, if you add the Patterson property on there, that's like a point eight of a mile. The map that you guys came back with is a mile and a half. So I'm, I'm glad to see the trail through the Patterson property, but, um, my still concern is that here in a year or two, they're still, so I really, we, we've looked at some estimates. It's about, um, they've said, uh, a hundred thousand dollars a mile for maybe doing a bike lane would be a way to, you know, we've suggested some paths and, and so maybe paintage and, but being a person that's in construction, it's all about mobilization, so when you're out doing things, um, you know, we did a lot of paintage. We, you know, hindsight, we'd have been efficient to do it at that time. When the excavating equipment was at the Patterson property, that would have been the time to put in that drain pipe. Now there's crushed asphalt there and I would really hate to see, well, I'd be happy if it got paved, but to pave it and then go, we need to put a drain pipe in, that would really be after the fact, so. But I'll end with that. I'll, I'll, I'll stop and thanks for your time and.
We'll, we'll keep working at it, Sean. Thank you.
Just remember, Sean, we're on your side. We want, we want trails.
Oh, one issue I forgot to bring up. I apologize then. The Thursday in October prior to Halloween would be the traditional night of trick or treat or beggars night in Washington Courthouse, Ohio, whichever label you want to put on it. The traditional hours are six to eight.
Would that be, let's see here.
Twenty-six, I believe.
It is a twenty-sixth. Okay, thank you.
So you're wanting us to approve the twenty-sixth? Is that what you're wedding?
Yes.
I'll make a motion. We sit back for the twenty-sixth of October, six to eight, beggars night in Washington Courthouse.
I will second that.
Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Now that we voted on beggars night, I just want to say one more time. If I thought this was going to be what you two were talking about, I would be on your side and we would be stopping this. I, I can, I'm, I'm one thousand percent sure it was, it's just going to be a fun night. So I, just so you understand that, I, I am on your side. I don't want those kind of things here, anyway. And really, truly, the person who's the head of Main Street is on your side too. That, that wasn't ever meant to be that way, so I'm sorry things got out there that made people think it was that way.
I think they just got a little carried away with their advertisement, like I said.
Anyway, uh, we have some legislation we have to pass.
Did Dell want to talk?
What?
Did Dell White want to talk?
Oh.
Well, she had her hands up earlier.
Dell, did you, did you want to say something else?
I'll try to make it short.
Am I here?
Oh, that's right, she asked.
I'm sorry, I forgot. In all this. Name and, name and address.
I'm Emma Dell Hefster White and I'm resident of Washington Courthouse. I was against Dora to start with. The reason being is because I was a teenager in Washington Courthouse, um, when there were, we called them beer joints downtown. It took years, but they got rid of the beer joints. And I had an experience which I'm sure a lot of young girls did and, um, Jim probably remembers my era because I graduated in sixty-four. But I was just walking down, because we shop downtown and there was a man come out of one of the joints and he said, you know, hey, you know. I was just a young teenager. I didn't want to go downtown and I didn't want to go around there. So anyway, the city apparently didn't want their children down in that atmosphere either shopping. So the good people in council or whatever changed that. Well, I was brought up, my siblings very religiously and we would go to grandma's house and my sisters and I would get old maid out and we would play old maid. My grandmother came over and she said, put those cards away. Well, grandma, all that is is old maid. I don't care. The, the devil's toys. Now, for a lot of children growing up today, they would think, man, you know, that's pretty bad. But a lot of people try to keep things that can affect children and cards are associated with gambling, I suppose is how that, she felt. But anyway, what I'm saying is that we have beggars night. That should have been enough for this whole thing. And let it be. But my personal feeling is this should be canceled for this shopping night because it's totally out of, um, the community in whole. And we all know that this is a very religious community. Beggars night, I mean, I love dressing up as a witch and all that. I like doing Zodiac and everything and all that and having certain faith in the full moon and whatever, which might be against a lot of religion. But what I am saying is that this is a religious community and I think this was a totally poor judgment to have the shop hop designated like that for witches and, and all that. That's Halloween. That's Halloween. Leave it for Halloween. So I wanted to say that because I do totally sympathize and I'm totally with the Christians that do feel the same way as this group does. And that's just, I wanted to say that because I, I feel that keep it clean and if it's for that reason, then yes, trick or treat. We all did trick or treat. We all had those funny masks that when we got slobbered and everything and heated up, they stuck to our faces and all that, but that was beggars night. And we didn't associate with any holy night or anything that way. But I'm just saying that it should be scratched. This thing should be scratched.
Okay.
For that reason. But thank you for listening to me and I did want to say something to say how I feel about, um, witches and all that, so, thank you.
May I give you a minute of question, Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
Dell, years ago, the guy that, that did the eh thing, that guy who, years ago, he looked at all like Jim Christman?
I can look at him.
That was Jim.
Imagine him at here.
That's a good one.
I said, imagine him at here.
Okay.
Looked like Jim Christman. That's a good one.
Somewhere along the line, I lost control. I would let you speak if it's real short. We've heard a lot tonight about it.
I know what you said.
Okay, uh, we have legislation to pass. And the first is legislation previously introduced, ordinance number eight, twenty twenty-three, second reading.
I'll move we put ordinance twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
And ordinance number eight dash two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse or his designate to abate public nuisance at eleven oh seven East Paint Street, authorizing a private contract for payment at the abatement of nuisance and directing the collecting of the cost of the abatement of nuisance from the owner of the property.
Next is ordinance number nine, twenty twenty-three, second reading.
I'll move that we put ordinance nine, twenty twenty-three on second reading. Second.
We got fewer people here tonight, so we gotta, okay, discussion. Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number nine dash two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse or his designate to abate public nuisance at twelve thirty-one Washington Avenue, authorizing a private contract for the abatement of the nuisance and directing the collecting of the cost.
authorizing a private contract for the abatement of the nuisance, and directing the collecting of the cost of the abatement of nuisance from the owner of the property.
And ordinance number ten, twenty twenty-three, second reading.
One, Caleb.
I move we place ordinance number ten, twenty twenty-three on second reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number ten dash two thousand and twenty-three, excuse me, an ordinance authorizing Joseph J. Denon, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, or his designee to abate public nuisance at eight seventeen Lakeview Avenue, authorizing a private contract for the payment of the abatement of nuisance, and directing the collecting of the cost of the abatement of nuisance from the owner of the property.
Okay, and I'd just say for my two students, uh, the city council passes ordinances, that's laws. It takes three readings, we just had a second reading for all of those, so we have to have another one. And, um, these things have been discussed in committee meetings, cause it seems like things go by so fast, everybody just votes. It's all been discussed before, so it's not just something that came up tonight. Now we're gonna turn to resolutions, which are things that aren't laws, but that we have to do, and there's only two of those, and so we have to adopt these resolutions tonight, because it's the second reading, and you only have to have two. So anyway, resolution number R thirty-nine, twenty twenty-three, second reading.
I'll make a motion. We place resolution number R thirty-nine, twenty twenty-three on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-nine dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Move for adoption. I'll second that.
Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Turn the page. Resolution number R forty, twenty twenty-three, second reading.
I'll move we put resolution R forty, twenty twenty-three on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R forty dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into contract with Johnson Emergency Vehicle Solutions for the purchase of a Spartan fire apparatus for the fire department, and authorizing the execution of financing arrangements.
I'll move for adoption.
Second.
Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Finally, we have resolution number R forty-one, twenty twenty-three, second reading.
I'll move we put resolution R forty-one, twenty twenty-three on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R forty-one dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the City Manager and/or the City Service Director of the City of Washington Courthouse to prepare, submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Exorcist Commission, state capital improvement, and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required to market street improvements phase one.
I'll move for adoption.
Second.
Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. We're gonna give you a few months since we had Court Street all messed up before we mess up Market Street. You got a few months before we start.
Few months, yes.
There is no new legislation in writing miscellaneous. Mr. Christman, do you have anything?
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming this evening and the comments that we had. It was, it's been interesting, opens up both sides of everything, which is good. That's where our system is supposed to work. So thank you for coming. You're welcome to come back anytime. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Hawk.
I've spoken my piece.
Mr. Schultz.
Well, I want to do the same thing. Thank everybody for coming and all your comments, which was very interesting. So sometimes things come out that we don't, um, maybe think about, so, um, but it, I, I think this whole process with what's going on Friday, the thirteenth, was the same thing that happened with Dora. Everybody had all these great things, think these terrible things are gonna happen with the door, and I don't think we've had more than five or six people walking around downtown doing those things, you know, so they, it just doesn't materialize, and so. But I, it, it's a, it's, it's a fun thing. I know we've had haunted houses downtown. We've had characters walking around downtown during the Halloween, and we never had one complain about it. We had witches walking around downtown. We never had one complaint about it. I think this one was just a little bit got carried away with their advertisement. They probably could have changed the wording a little bit on the advertisement, and like Mr. Denon said, they would have called it monster, Monster Mash. Nobody would have had a word to say about it. And any dancing going on, will maybe be some kids dancing to the Monster Mash if they happen to play that, that song. Matter of fact, a bunch of people might, cause it's one of the songs you can dance to, so, but I don't think it's gonna get any too carried away. It's not gonna be anything that you even notice, I'm sure. So, but that's it, but thanks everybody for the comments. I appreciate everybody coming tonight, so we do thank you very much. That's all I have.
Do I ask a question briefly?
Yes.
On your legislation, these houses, what is, what does this mean? I don't understand.
Oh, good question. These students here. Uh, we're abating nuisances, that means.
What do you mean? You're tearing them down?
Yes. Because of.
Is that at the expense of the owners?
Yes. That's because of the condition they're in. Good question.
It authorizes the actions, but your resources are never gonna be equal to the tear down. And in a lot of cases, what we'll do, going through the abatement process helps to legally justify the actions of the land bank. So in some cases, it becomes a land bank project as opposed to ours.
And what, what he means with that is hopefully they tear it down, it goes to the land bank, land bank resells that particular property. Somebody builds a new house on it or something like that, and we renovate the, the whole neighborhood, it comes back up and lives.
There are any, like say, the property only tore it down. They did it, it's still their property.
We encourage them to tear it down.
Yeah, we, yeah. We'd love for them to do that.
Mr. Johnson, you got anything?
Well, I attended the Scarecrow Festival, and it was very good. There was a, uh, there was a tent with tarot card readings. And a tent with free water offered by a religious organization, uh, for people as well, all at one festival within thirty yards of each other. I think they got along fine. I didn't hear of any fights between the two tents. But even if we, you know, disagree on, on witches, I'm a man of logic, uh, and science, as a Mr. Monty Python once wrote about. And he, in that fine, uh, play slash movie, uh, positive that, well, what do we burn besides witches? Well, the crowd first said, more witches. And he said, no. Someone said, wood. Yes, yeah, we burn wood. And he said, how can we know that this witch is made of wood? He said, we build a bridge out of her. And he said, well, that doesn't make sense, cause you can make bridges out of stone. They go, oh. They go, well, why does wood float? What else can we think of that floats? And they go a duck. And so they settle on using the finest scales in weighing this alleged witch and the duck. They said, if she weighs the same as the duck, then she is a witch. And so, uh, I would be in favor at most of weighing all of Main Street against the duck, now that we have legalized ducks in the city. I'm glad some people got a chuckle out of that. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
It was a long way around to get back to it.
I never thought in the minutes of a city council meeting, we'd have Monty Python. Uh, only thing I want to say has nothing to do with witches. Uh, I want to congratulate our service department. Uh, as I said in the, uh, committee meeting, uh, I went to school on Monday morning after the Scarecrow Festival at six something, and it looked like we hadn't had a Scarecrow Festival. They did an incredible job of getting things back in order. I know that people have not been ha- happy about closing down Court Street for a Scarecrow Festival and then the railroad track, but I appreciate the citizens putting up with that, because I think the Scarecrow Festival was successful. I think the railroad track is very nice, and I don't think it'll have to be replaced for quite some time. So those are some of the things that you have to do in the city, but I appreciate, cause everybody said, I bet you're getting a lot of flack over the, I said, no, I'm not. People just went around it. Now, yeah, it was a inconvenience, but people just went around it. So anyway, I appreciate, uh, the, the community doing that, so we can make improvements and have a festival. And I, last thing I'll say is, I appreciate, ladies, you were very well spoken. I loved your question. It's government class. I loved your question. Anyway, uh, thank you very much. Uh, now we'll adjourn. If anybody wants to make a motion.
I'm moved. I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes, we are adjourned.